Good afternoon, everybody. I would like to welcome everybody to the Ways and Means Subcommittee meeting. With the first meeting, Dylan, with the budget. Will you please stand and pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call the members, please.
Mr. Feranti?
Here.
Mr. Kingston?
Here.
Ms. Ty.
Before we go to the matter, I just want to recognize other members of the committee
here. To my right, Mrs. Stacy Bronson Rizzo, Ms. Susan Gravellisi, Acting Mayor Patrick O'Keefe. No, Keefe.
O'Keefe.
O'Keefe, sorry, Keefe. Superintendent Dr. Diane Kelly, member Ayesha Milbury Ellis, CFO Matt Cruz, and Assistant Superintendent Danielle McCovey. And at this point, Matt, start us off.
So, my aim on the outset of this conversation is to be brief and just hit on the biggest picture items. Create as much space as we can for specific questions. And really, we're trying to get our bearings on the budget season. And also, the goal is to implement as much of the superintendent's educational vision as we are able. And so, you're making decisions toward that end in conversation with each other. So, we gave you 140-plus-page first draft of the budget. Just a reminder, this was done in early April, so this process is in flux. We met with the city this morning, so there's already been some changes to some of these numbers, as is natural. The House Ways and Means Committee published their budget, which affects some changes. So, we're really trying to have more of a sense of the general trajectory around these items than where the specific dollars are, because there will be a lot of change over the next six weeks before we vote in June. So, my goal is to summarize the biggest ticket items and then open it up for conversation. So, on page two is your budget snapshot. Everyone, over the course of the last few months, should have seen the increase in our net school spending was pronounced, and this was expected and long awaited. So, some of that Student Opportunity Act money is finally hitting. So, our requirement baseline from the Commonwealth to spend on education went up by $17.5 million. Once that number is given to us, we start a process with the city of saying, what are your increased costs that you take care of on our behalf? What costs do we take care of on your behalf? What will our actual appropriation be? So, on the version that you received, it showed an expected appropriation of $123,771. We've done a lot of more work on Schedule 19, so that number has gone down some. It's in the $122 range now. So, this first draft was a little higher than we'll actually have for appropriation, but that was expected in the process. And the number down here that you see of the $8 million was what we had ready to work on when we did this report. That's probably closer to 6.8, 6.9 at this point in the process, but still close enough to have that conversation. The big thing is, this is the biggest increase we've seen dollar-wise in the time that Dr. Kelly and I have been here, and we want to be good stewards of that increase. All right, on that third page, it's just, it's given for information, but it's a reminder that the school department is required to spend a certain amount of money. And we try, but you never actually hit that exact number in any given year like anyone does, hopefully with their personal budget. You have some surplus. That surplus, in our case, can't just disappear like a normal department. It needs to be respent in the following year. We're accountable to spend what our net school spending is each year. So, we track that to the penny. We estimate it during the year, and this is the most recent breakout. It's larger than it's ever been. That's because you asked Dr. Kelly and I to work to amass a reserve so that staffing on our ESER grants have a home, even when those grants dry up. We've been doing that. So, that's just for you to see that in the fall, we will reappropriate unspent funds from this year, and we keep in the back of our mind, we know that it's coming. For example, throughout this first draft, you will see that as of now, we know that the first $5 million of our unspent carryforward that needs to be respent in the subsequent year will be invested in classroom teachers, which has been our practice. So, we just show that to you on those two pages so that you see it.
Matt, sorry. Are you on page three still? Okay. Just to clarify, I just want to identify, when you look at the FY '23 into FY '24, anticipated carryforward, the first line and the second line are intended to be spent.
Yes.
So, at the end of FY '24, the number we're looking to have in reserve is the $6 million, not the $14.7?
Yep.
Just to clarify. Okay.
And we'll keep that in mind as we work through this. And then, in the fall, is when, as a committee, you say, here's exactly how we want to remobilize that money, because we're required to spend it.
Matt, can I just ask a question? Does anybody have a question, Mr. Kingston or Ms. Ty, on what Matt's talking about?
None of that should have been strange to our years. This has been a standard practice. The next two pages just talk about Schedule 19, and I will update those based on our conversation this morning. So, Schedule 19 will look a little different than it did in your first draft, but these numbers are done in partnership communication with CitySide, so that their obligations are covered, ours are covered, and those will be adjusted as we come to our agreement on that negotiation. This net school spending analysis is new to the budget. It's just important for you to see in black and white that we are responsible not only to spend this year's formula-driven net school spending amount, but also any funds that were unspent from the previous year, whether as surplus or as liquidations of encumbrances that we thought we would spend and ended up closing out. So, we're always very careful to make sure that between your vote in June and your vote in the fall, we are mobilizing enough money to give us a chance to meet that net school spending requirement. We can always fall short of it by a maximum of 5%. We'd like to meet it each year. This is just showing you, in the background, is financial work done, making sure that you are not handcuffed from being given the opportunity to spend all that was required of you. And again, wherever it says projected, it's just the best we can do right now in this time of the budget to prepare for what will happen, and then the actuals will roll out over the summer. Special funds is just a snapshot of what we anticipate grant funding to be for next year, so it's just an FYI. And then, from there, it rolls into summary accounts, and you can look at variances there and inquire about them, but you'll see what's changed from one year to the next, both for salary and non-salary. And then, you have 125 pages of detail that follows from there. So, unlike some years where we're sitting at this table saying, we don't even have a dollar of wiggle room, we're saying, it's between $6 and $7 million of the state finally saying, hey, you've been waiting on this money. Here it is. Let's get it behind your superintendent's educational vision. That's the shoes that we're in this year, but also open to any questions about how we got to this stage of the budget. And I don't think going through each line is helpful. If there's questions that you have, we can dig into it together.
Can I add one more comment, Matt? Just a reminder to the committee, and I know you all know this from past budget hearings, but it is often the case that we move people whenever we can out of temporary grant funding into the budget so that we can make sure that that's accounted for on a longitudinal basis. So, you will see some areas where it looks like there's a large jump or increase, and typically, that's because a person has been moved out of grant funding into the district budget. So, I just wanted to highlight that.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Is that the case with Dr. Garcia coming out of ESER? Thank you.
Ms. Ayesha Milbury Ellis?
Matt, could you just explain the 3,000 series, the negative $190,000-plus with respect to the nurses, and then the negative $134-plus with respect to security?
Are you looking at the salary account summaries?
Page 11.
Okay, great. So, we'll start with the nurses. We have this peculiar reality where if the nurses are certifiable, is that the right word, then they're in our budget?
Let's say certified.
Certified. If the nursing staff is certified, we're able to include them in our budget. If they're not, but they are serving in school buildings, then they show up on Schedule 19 as a city qualifying cost, but their payroll is run through the city. So, the difference that you see here is simply FTEs moving back and forth between who's actually paying for them as of this moment. So, we're paying for less in your budget, but we're paying for more in the qualifying cost from the city.
And I'll just add, because we do have an agreement with the Revia Teachers Association, our endeavor is always to hire somebody who's licensed by DESI. If we cannot find somebody who's DESI-licensed, then we look for other RNs who can take that position, and as Matt just explained, they actually work for the city and are assigned to the schools. And that's just so that we can keep staffing levels where they need to be.
Was the second question on the security line?
Yes.
Okay. So, this is the preliminary budget, the first one. What we do here is we just go to who is actually employed in these positions right now, what is the obligation of their collective bargaining for next year, and let's get that in your budget. So, the reason this is looking very low on the first run is there's several security positions that there's nobody occupying them right now. So, between the high school principals' conversation with us at the last school committee meeting and tying out with Dr. Galucci, the 3,000-series staffing, you'll see that increase over this time to account not just for who is in the budget, but who needs to jump into those positions.
Okay. Thank you.
Some of this is just first run is grabbing actuality, and then these conversations shape it going forward.
Mr. Kingston?
Matt, I was kind of surprised. I understand it, but I was surprised at it. We have added 70% of the retired teacher's health insurance assessment is found on the Commonwealth Massachusetts Department of Rettainer Cherry Sheet.
Sure.
As a qualifying city cost. I mean, 70% increase is rather dramatic.
Yes, so...
Is that a question?
Yep.
The health insurance.
There is a chunk of money that shows up on the cherry sheet as a charge to the city for retired teachers' health insurance. For a long time, we had not been including that amount as a qualifying cost on Schedule 19, but you can. And so, this year, we're taking that amount as it appears on the cherry sheet, which is around $2.3 million, and the Department of Education allows in FY '24 for 70% of that cost to be counted toward net school spending. So, you're seeing that big jump at the top of Schedule 19. In FY '25, the expectation is that it will be 80%, and then 90%, and then in FY '27, I think it is 100% of that cost will be creditable toward net school spending. So, that's a big jump there that we had not seen before. The city had been contributing it, but we had not been including it as a net school spending eligible expense on that negotiation.
Thank you. Thank you.
Matt, I have one question on the 1,000 series. On the school committee budget, we budgeted 52.5. When I went to the backup, it looks like that we didn't include one of the members for the total salary. Oh, I'm sorry, page 15.
Matt, can I? Oh, go ahead.
Can you just explain that? It's what's on board now, it's what's in the...
Ah, so what you're seeing is one of the current school committee members is not taking a salary. So, when we pulled into this budget from that existing lineup, that's what's missing. What we'll do is, in these coming versions, as we tie out who's intending to be and will there be, we'll add to that line. So, that's how that, that's why that's short one of the six salaries.
So, that will be included in the updated budget?
Oh, yeah. We're going to go back through this line multiple more times to tie out every detail. What we try to do on the first one is take the snapshot of today, or that would have been two months ago, today, and say, let's work from there, and then tie these things out as we go.
And my last question on page 10, the miscellaneous payments to teachers. I went through that, and there were so many pluses and minuses, I really couldn't follow it. And to have a minus $50,000 there, I really couldn't understand why. Can you just explain that to me, please?
Do you want to...
On page 10.
We went through, yep. And also, the backup on that is very detailed. It appears on, I'll just give you the, what Michael is referring to is from page 40...
49. Starts on page 49.
Yes. So, basically, what we did was, we went and cleaned that up to reflect reality from this year, and anywhere that there was positions that were in the budget last year, that these principals are just not mobilizing, we adjusted accordingly. So, across the 11 schools, if there was two mentors here that are not in practice and a PLG facilitator there, it ended up bringing down the total by the amount that you were referencing. So, it's actualizing to what the practice is this year. And then, again, we had conversation about approving, was it Open Sci... There's other things that I just added to this this morning that will increase that to catch up with the reality as we do it. The climate change at the high school and some of the stipends going to that place. So, that'll be a number that's in flux, but we'll ask every principal, are you intending to have all of these positions? And if not, then we reduce here, because they're not going to be staffing at that level.
Right. So, this version of the budget that we're looking at right here is, if we kept everything exactly the same next year as it is this year, this is what the cost would be, which is where we always like to start from. But we have already collected information from curriculum directors and principals about what they anticipate their needs are in terms of additional staff, which then has a, what's the word I'm looking for, a rolling effect?
Echo effect.
Echo effect, thank you. So, by the number of increased new teaching positions we have, we're going to need that many more mentors. We're going to need that many more PLG facilitators. Like, all of those numbers will come back into play, and that does vary year to year based on how many veteran teachers and how many new staff we have coming in.
And grant funding.
And grant funding, yeah.
Go ahead, Mrs. Rizzo.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that I understand. So, we have positions that are out there that are not filled, but we're hoping to hire people. Are those positions budgeted for in here? Are they reflected in here, even though these people are not in the position?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else have any other questions? Ms. Ty?
Just one. I'm assuming...
You just shut it off, Carol.
Yeah. That's the one.
I was good on technology. So, are we assuming that we're going to have, you know, some sort of balance between the number of positions we have this year and the ones we have next year? In other words, will there be a trade-off, or that there are new positions that we hired? And then, on the staff that we have this year, are we assuming that we're going to have at least that many and probably more?
Yes.
We hope, certainly.
Yes. So, another way to say that is, the budget that you're looking at says, if everything flows with all the collective bargaining commitments as it is this year, here's what that would cost. And because of the SOA increase, this committee has a minimum discussing, this new $6 million that's flowing to us is available, how are we employing those dollars in a sustainable way to implement educational vision? That's not included here, because it's going to emerge from these conversations.
Thank you.
And then, other adjustments will happen, too. For example, if a veteran teacher, our teachers with a master's degree who are on Step 10 and maybe get some longevity are making about $115,000 a year, if even three or four people in that category decide to retire, and we replace them with a newer teacher who's making $50,000 or $60,000 a year, that makes a huge difference in the budget. And those are the kinds of tweaks that Danielle and Matt and Richie will work on as we go from Version 1 to Version 2 as well. So, there'll be those ups and downs.
Well, it's not that I'm trying to push anybody out, but, I mean, have you had notifications so that you are aware and have kept that in mind for looking for replacements?
Yes. Yep.
My assumption was that you had.
Ms. Milbury Ellis?
Does this budget, I'm on page 55, I'm just looking at the special ed. I'm wondering if this takes into account the 14% increase that's to be expected?
So, that is, we have gone up and then down in doing that work. In other words, the first thing we did was say, off of last year's budgeting, if we went up by 14, what would it look like? But then, as you can see in the detail, what we did was, we said, well, let's get into, how many kids do we have to actually have outplaced compared to this year? What schools are they at? How many purchase orders have we encumbered? So, in doing that work, we saw that the budget that you voted last year was, I'll say, higher than it needed to be for actual. So, some of that has been mitigated with an up and a down, and it's tied very closely to the practice for this year. Now, we always assume the number of students, we give wiggle room to have more kids outplaced than this year, so that we don't get stuck if we have 10 new students that had to get outplaced. But you're not seeing a flat 14% increase, because we've gone into the numbers to make sure, what are we actually tracking at with costs? We are, as a committee, we are generally conservative in our budgeting, but also, no one wants to budget $200,000 that we're not going to need at all. We'd rather use it for something. So, that's why some of this has give and take to get to the best guess we can make to free up as much as we can to actually employ. Special ed and some other areas are the most pronounced. So, some places, you don't see a lot of analysis and background, and then other places, you see three pages. That's because we're trying to do a good job with those bigger ticket items.
Sorry, I'll just add, the 14% applies to private special education schools outside of the district. So, you won't see that 14% automatically added across the board on special education, but just on that subgroup.
Right. Matt, when you get a chance, I'm just curious as to how much we were affected by that change, the increase by the 14%? When you get a chance, could you just give me that number?
Yep.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions? Matt, I just have one question. Were we organizing the SPED program, and is about another additional, it looks like 10 positions? Where can we find that in this budget? Because I looked for it, and I couldn't find this. Could you tell me where that is?
That's right. No, this is not in the budget. Again, this was built before some of those, some of that vision was done. So, in the next iteration of the budget, you will see those positions, the security that we talked about the other night with Chris Bowen at the high school, you'll see those positions, the Open Science education stuff that we're doing. You'll see some of those flow into this for the next version of the budget. I wish I could, like, do it, and then two seconds later, give it to you, but we have to publish everything, what, two weeks ahead of tonight? So, those positions will be a part of this $6 or $7 million that we're working toward, and some of it has been identified, but none of it is in this first 1.0 version of the budget.
But where are we?
And so, I'm giving you right now a spreadsheet that I put together after talking to principals and directors. None of this is finalized, but this is what their requests were. And just to give us a sense of, it's organized by school, which I hope is helpful, and then, when it says district, it's a district position. But these were what the requests were, and, you know, there were some other requests that we talked to them about and went through, but these are the ones that were, you know, if there was no budget at all, that we would be approving. And the first, let's see here, four pages, I think it is, of course, I didn't number them, five, six, I think, are general asks from directors and from principals, and they include some non-salary stuff, like some materials and software that, I know Diana Finn had a request, I know the SPED office had a request for tracking BBS T referrals, a few other things. But if you go to, and I apologize for not numbering this, the second to last page...
Yep.
Toward the top, you see RHS redesign on the title at the top of that page. Do you see where I am, Michael?
Yeah.
And so, this is what we are estimating Chris's asks to include, and you can see that the, any non-RTA positions are listed to the left. So, the second, the first line is teachers. He's requesting student support team, five members, five teachers. 275 for non-RTA positions, also five members. Those are the five academies that he talked a little bit about. Two more guidance counselors who will help fill out those teams. And then, you see the campus supervisors, the security, right there. Those are those additional positions that you were talking about, Michael, that have already been approved. But for them to go into the new budget, we didn't just add it into Version 1.0, because it's not what exists this year. It's still, we're still looking at those as new positions. And then, there's some other pieces here, professional development and student programming totaling 262, and that's itemized just below in gray. That's all targeted for the high school. And then, below that, you see the special education redesign, and there's the executive director. Again, it's a non-RTA position, so we list it at 160. The special ed transition coordinator is one teaching position. Special ed coaches is four teaching positions. Special ed coordinators, this is what we used to call ETLs, three additional in order to give one at each school. And again, those are teaching positions. An additional five school psychologists, teaching positions. And one of the things that was proposed was full-time payers in all SLG classes, which we estimate the cost of salary and benefits at $700,000, roughly. And so, what this comes out to is $1.259 million in fixed costs or non-RTA salaries and $6.460 million in teacher salaries. That comes out to 7.7. We don't have that much. And I haven't talked to Jonathan Farrar about what he wants for technology, or Carl about what he wants to do for facilities. So, we're going to have to make some changes or some tweaks, and talk to our team about what the priorities are, and also talk to all of you, because I know that you have different ideas of what priorities should be, and we want to take that into consideration and add that in. So, I'm looking at, we have Version 1.0 over here, we have the wish list. Somehow, we got to bring this all together. And when we get Version 2.0 that has the correct numbers after the Schedule 19 negotiation, we'll know how much of this wish list we have to cut. And when we know how many other things aren't on the wish list yet that we want, that will represent other wish list costs. But we thought this would be a good place for us to start today, to have a clear picture of what most people are looking for, add what other people want, and then move forward from there. If that makes sense.
A question, Dr. Kelly. If we hire the people that they're looking for, where are we going to put them? Where are we going to put the teachers?
That's a really good question. As you know, it's a challenge, right? We started doing some analysis at the high school, and we've got only four rooms that are not used for the entire day. So, we're going to have to do more looking at, like, one of the asks that you'll see on this wish list is for another music teacher, specifically, somebody who can work on vocals. And when I talked to Kelly Williams today, she said they'll have to be stationed out of the auditorium, or she had the chorus room with Christina Minissian, who, you know, does all of our theater arts. Like, we have to think of creative things like that. There's a request for two more fine arts teachers, so more of the paint and sculpture, that kind of art. And we talked to Ms. Williams and Mr. Bowen, and he's talking about repurposing a biology room that's across from the real art rooms and making that be an art room for one of those teachers, and then having the other teacher, like, including some floating to happen there, and then making Room 313, which is on the other side of the third floor, into a biology room. So, there's... So there's a lot of calculus that has to go into all of this, but the principals have assured me that they will find some kind of space for everybody in order to get teachers in.
But at that point, you know, it's great to have a wish list, but if we can't put them in a room, I don't want them in the middle of the car hallway doing stuff, or in the corridors doing stuff. I mean, it's great to have a list, but, I mean, realistically, at some point, you have to be real, you just can't hire them because you don't have the space. Unless we're gonna take this room and make it a classroom for people.
Oh, that would be great.
Go ahead. So that was a great segue. My, my question is, have we given serious consideration about moving the administrative offices? Like, thought it through as far as finding other space, moving us? We could share with the city council. I mean, we meet not that often in giving this space up for classrooms.
It's an inter, more interesting proposal to me now that we know we won't be having this building anymore. Like, originally, we didn't want to do that because we intended to be in this building when this building became a central middle school. It's probably something that we should look at, whether it's leasing space, or if we are able to build the early childhood center, which is still our hope at the McKinley School. Maybe our administration office has to go there. It's something that we should think about. It would definitely take a couple of years of planning. It's a big lift to move all of the electronics and files and everything that we have in the swing of the building, but it's definitely something worth considering. It would definitely alleviate the overcrowding at the high school. I don't know that it's something that we could pull off by September.
Mrs. Rizzo?
I'm not sure of the exact words. I know in many districts, when they look at the core teachers, and there's so many times that those classrooms are not being used and open, have we looked into utilizing them? So, so that, you know, if it's a biology, well, biology's different, you need certain things for that room. But literature, you don't need a confined room.
And that's what I was talking about when, when I said we're down to four classrooms that are not fully utilized the entire day, just four rooms that have openings in them. So we've gotta look at, we've gotta look at that.
Matt, just a question for yourself. Could we get a listing of all the employees that we employ? Like, you used to give us all the teachers and the cafeteria workers? Make a total listing?
Sure. I mean.
Tomorrow.
Well, let's get one that starts the process. Does anybody else have any questions?
I hesitated to say it, but I, there is nothing that is more demeaning than having to teach with a cart, move from room to room. I mean, you know, you've seen it as students, you know how horrible it is. And it certainly is a terrible thing for a teacher to have to do.
So to that, to that point, Ms. Ty, yeah.
I mean, I know you'll do everything you possibly can. I just didn't wanna let that go unsaid.
And I, and I know one of the, one of the things they're working on at the high school, Mr. Bowen and Ms. Finn, is assigning rooms so that, so there's the four periods in a day, and teachers teach three of those four blocks, right? So they're looking at trying to be a little bit more equitable and saying, you know, Ms. Ty is gonna be in this room, periods one and two, and then she'll teach period three somewhere else and have her prep fourth period. And Ms. Melbury Ellis is gonna teach in that same room Ms. Ty's in, periods three and four. Period one, she's gonna teach in this other room, and she has her prep second period. So that teachers only have to move one time during the day. And making sure that they have enough furniture, like, that room that I just described needs to have two teachers' desks, so that each one of those teachers can have their own space, lock up their own belongings, keep what they need in a, in a particular area. I know that Ms. Finn and Mr. Bowen are making that a priority. And even ma, trying to make sure, as much as they can, that that second room the teacher has to go to is connected to that first room. They're not going from room three thirteen up on the back hallway of the third floor down to the east wing conference center for their third class, you know what I mean? So they're really trying to work on that as part of their focus, and making sure, to Mrs. Rizzo's point, that the rooms are utilized in a really efficient way.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Keller and Matt? I guess not. Matt?
Sure. So just so that there's clarity on what happens from here. We will now move to building version two point oh of the budget for Ways and Means and School Committee Review. That will include solidifying the Schedule Nineteen negotiation, we did that this morning, and being very specific about, here is what our appropriation is. We'll do that work. I am now doing a weekly projection of general ledger accounting so that we have the best sense we can of our anticipation of what carryforward will be. So you'll see those numbers move. It's always just a projection because the fiscal year doesn't close until June thirtieth, but we want that as tight in the budget vote as possible so that we have as much confidence as we can. I'll be working with Danielle and with Richie to work in the details of the staffing, individual by individual. So if we know an expensive tenured teacher is retiring, and we're likely to replace them with someone younger, we wanna actualize that in the budget and not have that difference unmobilized. We'll be doing that work. We'll also be taking this wish list, implementing it into version two point oh. I'll use some colors so you can see, these are wish list items. And we will see then, so where are we at with all of these multiple parts having moved? Schedule Nineteen's done, the budget's been cleaned up, we've put in the wish list, everything gets in proper place. Now, what is our surplus and/or variance that we are chasing, or where are we at? You will be empowered in the next conversation to see that in detail in the budget. So we've already started on that because of the, the leeway between when this was published, but all of that will happen, and as soon as I have it, I will get a version two point oh out to anyone. And it should be soon, Schedule Nineteen is set, and we've been working away at the other, at the other items. So that's the process from here.
Mr. Kingston?
Matt, how difficult would it be to give us a list of people that are either on grants or being paid with SIR money? Like, a list?
So you can see it at the back end of this budget, starting, I was gonna draw your attention to page.
I looked at it, but I didn't know how, I didn't know, I mean, again, I know it's preliminary as it's today, but I didn't, I guess going forward. Like, I know that one of the superintendents was moved, I caught that. I mean, that was pretty easy.
Starting at page ninety-five, you will see all staff that's in a special fund revolving or grant. So from ninety-five down, you see that? And just as a, for example, if you go to page one hundred, you'll see that I noted for you, the following were paid out of SIR III in FY twenty-three. So we have moved Dr. Garcia, the communications coordinator, the PIC coordinator, and several others into the budget. You can see that. And then below that shows you who's scheduled to be out of SIR III. And don't forget, SIR III, this is the last year we have that, so next year, you will see all of these teachers moved into the regular budget. That's why we've been building the district reserve, to have a few years to carry that, that in there. So at the back end, you'll see that.
So, so next year, basically, we're looking at almost two point four million that we have to account for, correct? Because they'll come off funding, correct?
That's why you've been building a district reserve.
No, no, I'm, I'm just asking a question.
That's it, you got it.
I just wanted to be clear. No, I, I read this, I saw it, I saw the superintendent get moved, I saw all this. I just wanted to ask the question and get an answer from you, that approximately two point four million is gonna come out of next year's money. Or these people are going away, one or the other.
Right. So the head counts will be steady, and then, of course, a hundred thousand dollar teacher could become a sixty thousand dollar teacher, and we recognize the savings there.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mrs. Rizzo?
I have, I have two. One is, out of curiosity, what is a hybrid cafeteria worker?
They're the ones that also do the bus monitor, that we negotiated last year with their union. So they work part of the day in the cafeteria and part of the day as a bus monitor.
Interesting choice of words, but it works. And my second item is under the one thousand series, the line items, if we can add four thousand to each item, that would be appreciated.
Which page are you?
It's a numbered page, I have. It's, um, at the.
That's weird.
It's page fifteen. One thousand series, page fifteen.
Okay, page fifteen, got it.
Should I add that to the wish list?
No, you can't. Ms. Melbury Ellis?
Oh, it's not mine either.
Ms. Melbury Ellis?
A question about the paraprofessionals. Are the eighteen full-time paraprofessionals reflected on this list? I was going through it, and they all seem to have similar expenses or amounts allocated to them, but I, I would think that the eighteen would have, there would be more, you know?
I'll close the page.
I'm, I'm sorry, I just lost it because I went, I went back to Stacy's page.
So if you go.
Towards the end, I think.
If you go to page sixty-three.
Okay.
And you look up at the top, it says eighteen new full-time aides are being added for FY twenty-four. So your head count of special ed full-time aides is going from twelve to thirty. See it there?
Yep, I see that. And, and it's, I mean, this might be a silly question, so forgive me. Can you just point to where I'm, I'm seeing the full-time funds being added, added to those eighteen? Is it right here that follows it?
Yeah, so that's the next page.
Okay, I see it.
Sixty-four as well, there's thirty of them.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yep.
Well, seeing none, I believe it's time, we need a motion to close out the meeting. Roll call, please.
Ms.
Join.
Who is the second? John, do you want a second?
Second. Yeah, you don't have a minute, you can't, sir.
Danielle, a roll call, please.
Mr. Franti?
Yes.
Mr. Kingston?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
The meeting is ended at ten oh five.